Good morning. I'm Dan Garadnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting, February 15th, 2023. Today, we are going to hold public hearings on several proposals that, if approved, would create nearly 2,000 jobs and about 370 homes for New Yorkers, helping both with our city's economic recovery and housing crisis. The first hearing for today is on a project that would modernize and expand the paperific supermarket and create new office space in Borough Park, Brooklyn, bringing fresh produce and over 400 permanent jobs to the site. The public is invited to testify on another economic development opportunity, this one located in Long Island City, Queens. This proposed 26-story office tower would create around 1,500 jobs, blocks from two major subway stations, Queens Borough Plaza and Queens Plaza. Staying in Queens, the Commission will also hold a hearing on a new flood-resistant building in Far Rockaway that would create 40 homes, 10 of them income-restricted, near Bayswater Park, and also on a proposal to legalize a tire shop on South Conduit Avenue in Rosedale. And in Allerton in the Bronx, the public is encouraged to testify on a 100% affordable development with over 330 homes, a new supermarket, and a community facility near the 25 subway and Bronx Park. We have several votes lined up for this morning as well. In Brooklyn, we will vote on the Melrose Parkside Historic Districts in Prospect Leopard's Gardens and a plan to formally combine two collaborative neighboring business improvement districts that already pool their resources for their communities, Flatbush Avenue and Church Avenue, into the Church-Flatbush Community Alliance. In West Chelsea, Manhattan, the Commission will also vote on an enlargement of the historic Otis Elevator Building. So, lots to do today. Sarah, let's go ahead and get started and kick things off.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. I will now call the roll. Chair Garadnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Bozark.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell. Commissioner Doak is on Zoom, I believe.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold is also on Zoom.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Kramani.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, February 1st, 2023.
Thank you very much. On the motion, I'm sorry, on the minutes I make a motion to approve, is there a second? Commissioner Rampershad with the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Sorry about the, I hear you on Zoom. Thank you very much. We got you. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling, calendar numbers 1 and 2. We have resolutions for adoption, scheduling Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, for a public hearing to be held in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great. Thank you very much. I make a motion to approve the resolutions. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chairman Knuckles with the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 5. Borough Brooklyn, calendar number 3, Melrose Parkside Historic District, CD 9, N 230177 HKK, and the matter of a communication regarding the historic district designation concerning Melrose Parkside Historic District on the adoption of calendar number 3 for referral to the City Council. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
So, I'm voting yes on this, but I did want to reiterate something that I said at the end of the review session on this matter, which is that I hope in the future we can look at a lot more additional information on these historic designation requests that allow us to evaluate these in the context of the broader affordability crisis we're all faced with. I think the research, as I understand it, by Vicki Bean, Ingrid Ghul Ellen, and others, suggests that these designations increase property values within and even outside of historic districts outside of Manhattan, and obviously limit development activity. So, I did appreciate the addition of information in the report about the development that has taken place in this community board over the past decade, and I think this warrants approval, but again, hope that we can evaluate these with much more robust information in the future.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 3 has been adopted for referral to the City Council. Borough Brooklyn, calendar number 4, Flatbush Avenue Bid Expansion, CDs 9 and 14, N 230160 BDK, and the matter of an application for an amendment concerning the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District Expansion for a favorable report on calendar number 4. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 4. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 5, Otis Elevator Building, 260 11th Avenue, CD 4, N 230045 ZRM, and the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning Otis Elevator Building, 260 11th Avenue, for a favorable report on calendar number 5. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Recused.
Recused, yes. Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes, provided the changes that I recommended to the report regarding a stronger language, reflecting the commitment that the applicant made to the community board and the board president regarding sustainability measurements and climate adaptation changes. Thank you.
We are, we're going to mark you as a yes, though. Okay.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 5. Borough Staten Island, calendar numbers 6, 7, 8, and 9. Calendar number 6, CD 3, N 230087 RCR, Anandel Road. Calendar number 7, CD 3, N 230119 RCR, 152 Hillcrest Street. Calendar number 8, CD 3, N 220256 RCR, 4119 Richmond Avenue. Calendar number 9, CD 3, N 230136 RCR, Prowl Avenue, and the matter of applications for the grant of certifications concerning Anandel Road, 152 Hillcrest Street, 4119 Richmond Avenue, and Prowl Avenue, for the adoption of calendar numbers 6, 7, 8, and 9. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
I love that we coupled these. Aye.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 6, 7, 8, and 9 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 8.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to ask those who are testifying today to limit their remarks to three minutes, and I am going to ask you, Madam Secretary, to call the first item.
Borough Brooklyn, calendar numbers 10, 11, and 12, paperific rezoning, CD 12. Calendar number 10, C 220470 ZMK. Calendar number 11, N 220471 ZRK. Calendar number 12, C 220472 ZSK. Public hearing and the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permit concerning paperific rezoning.
Great. Thank you very much. And here with us today is Eli Gawertz to make a presentation, and I will note that we have David Friedlander and Haley Paget also available on Zoom. So, Mr. Gawertz, welcome. Whenever you are ready, you can go ahead and get started.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Garadnik, Commissioners. My name is Eli Gawertz. I'm a land use attorney at Davidoff Hutcherson Citron, and we're representing the applicants here, Stanford LLC and Capri Optics, Inc., in this rezoning application at the paperific supermarket located at 1459 1463 38th Street in the Borough Park section of Brooklyn, Community District 12. We are in Councilmember Shaheena Hanif's district, Council District 39. So, as you guys are all familiar by now, this zoning map, this rezoning application is comprised of three land use actions, a zoning map amendment to rezone 25 blocks along 15th Avenue to the east, 38th Street to the south, 37th Street to the north, and 14th Avenue to the west, from R6 M12 M21 to C44A, and then further west, lots 55 through 66, were asking to be rezoned from M21 to R6B, a zoning text amendment to map MIH areas, options 1 and option 2 over the entirety of the project area, and a zoning special permit pursuant to ZR Section 74-681 to permit development along a former transit right-of-way as part of our development site along 37th Street, used to be part of the Culver L Elevated Transit Line, which has been demolished and is no longer being used for transit purposes. All of these land use actions are meant to facilitate a five-story, fully commercial building with an enlarged and enhanced paperific supermarket on the ground floor with office uses above. I would just say that the operators here, the Friedlander family, have been operating this paperific supermarket for 40 years now. They're beloved in the community, as the community board fully supported this application, and they just want to enhance their services, which currently the zoning does not allow in the M12 district to increase the size of their supermarket. So, here is our zoning map. As you see, we're rezoning the lots along 15th Avenue from R6, which was the product of a rezoning in 2007. That was meant to facilitate a six-story residential building, which has never been built. We're rezoning that a lot to C44A to promote the commercial viability of these sites as residential, has been residential for 15 years and nothing has come of that. Our development site is zone M12 M21, which we are proposing to rezone to C44A. We understand that C44A does permit residential uses, but that has never been our intention here. This is a fully commercial development. It happens to be that C44A is, makes sound land use sense.
Let's give you an extra 20 minutes, 20 seconds because of the, 20 minutes may be more generous than we need to be. We have another 20 seconds to finish up.
The lots here to the west are non-conforming row homes, which we're rezoning to R6B, which would clean up the zoning map and make these row homes conforming uses. As you see, our zoning map amendment from C4, to C44A and R6B. This is looking at our rezoning area. From an aerial view, you see Brooklyn Square. That's the six-story, 442,000 building.
All right. Now, we're going to wrap you.
Okay.
So, finish that sentence, and then we're going to pose some questions, which will elicit, I think, probably some of the things that you're going to tell us.
Yes. And just to point out, the Brooklyn Square Building is a fully leased-out commercial office building. We're trying to piggyback off of the success they've been having, their wait lists and our office space that we're proposing, or hopefully continue that success that we're seeing in this area for office space for people to work in the local community and not to have to commute to Manhattan necessarily for office space.
Thank you. As you know, the Borough President recommended approval here with some conditions, but conditions that I believe you are going to be able to satisfy, specifically that this is actually a commercial development and a supermarket. Do you want to address the Borough President's recommendation?
Yes, 100%. So, as I said in the beginning, first of all, this, our client here, the applicant, is a supermarket operator. That is their business. They are trying to grow their business. That was the motivation behind this application. They have been here for 40 years. They are a beloved community resource. And again, the zoning here does not allow them to enlarge their supermarket. I will note that, I understand also the Borough President noted that this is currently a fresh zone, but when we initiated this application, this was not a fresh zone, so M districts would not have permitted an enlargement to the supermarket. Additionally, as noted, the rezoning in 2007 to R6 was meant to facilitate residential development. We have found that that residential development was never built because there is not a strong residential market here, as opposed to office, where we see, based on the success that Brooklyn Square has had, immediately across the street, we find that there is a stronger market for office space, and we are fully committed to building that office space to respond to post-pandemic needs for this community.
Okay. Thank you. And one other question for me, which, you know, I raised the other day at the review session, was the structure of the building looks much more like an office building than one that even would or could accommodate a supermarket at the base. Perhaps it is due to what I perceive as perhaps the more typical supermarket-type entrance with more windows and things like that, but if you could just address how the, where the supermarket entrance is and how that works in relation to the office building entrance.
Yes, 100%. So, if we can just, I'm going to let Haley Paget, who's our architect, speak to this, but I just want to point out that the paperific entrances, where it says "paperific," those are the two entrances to the paperific. So, to the far, as you see there, that's to the far east, and then in the center, the far west entrance, that is for the office tenants. So, the paperific entrances are the center one and the one to the east. And Haley, are you there? If you could speak, please, to the design of the supermarket on the ground floor.
Hello, everyone. Haley Paget here, representing JFA, the architects for this project. Help my video on. Yeah, so, as Ellie said, to the left, to the left, we have our entrance for our office tenant, but also to the right, we would do an inlet and an outlet for paperific signage right now. It's kind of indicating those locations. The idea behind a less ShopRite, you know, type design is that because this is actually on a narrow street as opposed to a wider street, we want to blend in a little bit more with the row homes to the left and not make the presence quite as blatant. So, it's a joint, a joinery, which means something you would see that might read as a residential building in its context, but also something that can just blend better texturally. Maybe some of the questions where you're speaking more along storefront is that we haven't decided whether left or right or center will be ingress and egress.
Ms. Paget, can you, can you pause? Can we pause you for one second?
Sure.
Is there, I just wanted to see if you can just find a way to speak a little closer to your microphone. It is a little bit difficult. I think we have gotten the sense of what you have told us, but if you could speak a little closer to the microphone and let us see if it comes in a little clearer.
Okay, absolutely. You're going to be getting a view of my forehead at this point, but yeah, so we haven't decided whether to the right or in the center will be ingress and egress, and in that, whether we'll be doing sliding glass doors, the air curtains, so some of those finer details that might make it read a little bit more as the entrance to a supermarket. We plan to iron out once we get all the programmatic elements included in that ground floor plan, but we did think that the windows being carried down from the top helped it read a little bit more as something of the scale of a townhouse of what, you know, would be continued to the left. So, it was just a, you know, a play on what the context was giving us around.
Thank you very much.
Do I need to reiterate what you said, or?
Well, I think we, I think we got it, that it was intended to be understated and connect and respectful for the surrounding neighborhood.
Correct.
I think it's the gist of what I heard at the front and also what Ms. Paget said at the end. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see what other questions there are here. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. With regard to the parcels that the applicant does not own, like the row houses, the adjacent row houses, and I think there were a few other parcels that are within the project site. Correct. Yeah, we do not own any of the lots along 15th Avenue. Right. Have the owners of those parcels that would be rezoned, have they been apprised of this? And to what extent are you aware of their response to this? Yes, 100%. They are, have been apprised to this. We actually received letters from the homeowners that we're rezoning to R6B, expressing their support for this. They like the fact that their homes will become conforming uses. That could help them with refinancing purposes. It can increase the value of their properties if they have conforming zoning, so they are fully supportive. The neighbor as well along 15th Avenue is aware of what we're doing and has not expressed any resistance or any sort of negative feedback about being rezoned to C44A. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Doak.
Yeah, hi. You mentioned that this area is not in the IDA program, but is this qualified, is your project going to be using, taking advantage of the IDA, I'm sorry, the fresh food program? Is your project going to be taking care of the IDA, taking advantage of the IDA fresh benefits and the tax exemptions?
So, that's actually something we're exploring right now because we understand that the tax benefits could be highly beneficial here. That's something that we are exploring right now to see if we can make that work. But as I mentioned before, when we, yeah, when we initiated this application, this was not in a fresh zone, so it was not in our radar at the time.
For a zoning bonus, but not, but the IDA benefits still qualifies, what I meant to say.
I would have to double-check if it was part of the IDA pre-December 2021. I'm not sure if it was, but I understand that in December 2021, when the zoning fresh expansion program was, that's when it was expanded and that's when it was approved. And we had started this application a year, a year and a half before that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio, followed by Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for highlighting the concerns or the comments of the Borough President. Thank you for the presentation and for addressing that. It's very good to hear that. I specifically would love to just, a quick, start with a quick clarifying question, following up on Commissioner Doak's question. It sounds like you are, given the circumstances now, you are considering potentially fresh, taking advantage of the fresh incentives, correct?
Yes, from the tax incentives, yes. The zoning incentives here do not help us, so we're looking at for the tax incentives, yes.
Thank you. And then along those lines, the Borough President suggests, or, you know, that prior to City Council consideration, whether the applicant would be open to furnishing written comments that if the rezoning is approved, you know, plans filed with the Department of Buildings will actually reflect the designs that were presented to the board and elected officials in terms of, you know, the intended to, for this to be sort of what you just laid out. Is that, is that something that you would consider?
It's, we want to be treated the same way as any rezoning application in the city. The way, as you know, rezonings work, you're proposing your proposed development and you get the zoning map amendment. This is clearly our intention to build this commercial building, but if you're talking about some sort of restrictive declaration or something along those lines that lock us into that, I'm not sure if we could commit to that, but we definitely, this is a rezoning to C44A because, C4, if you look at the zoning resolution, there are not a lot of zoning districts that would have permitted this type of commercial floor area that don't also permit residential. Like manufacturing districts would not have worked here because that would not have allowed us to increase the size of the supermarket. C8 districts do not make a sound land use sense here, given that we're right next to row homes and they're meant to facilitate more car-intensive uses. So, the C44A, we specifically chose because of the commercial program that it could facilitate, and that's something we are fully committed to building.
Thank you. You know, that's clear, and I respect that. The reason why this concern is emerging is because of the equivalency of the C4A with R7A, for example, and the potential residential development that can actually be allowed further down the road. And so, I guess the spirit behind the comment is whether or not there's something formal that you can do between now and City Council review to fully commit to the proposal that is being, as you said, basically.
Okay. I could bring that back to my team and see what we could come up with. Sure.
And one last other question. So, in terms of the sustainability measures, I was wondering if you can expand a little bit on what is sort of within sort of the current discussion in terms of sustainability and resiliency, particularly given some of the concerns regarding stormwater inundation on 37th and so forth. I'm wondering if you can expand a little bit on what is the project considering as of today?
Yes. So, as you guys, as everyone has seen, 37th Street has much to be desired at the moment. It's a street that has not been given a lot of investment over the past few years, and this is something that the applicant has been beseeching the city for, to improve the infrastructure along 37th Street. What we're committed to doing is building out a sidewalk here. There are no sidewalks currently along 37th Street, so by building a sidewalk and creating the curb cuts with the proper sloping, that in itself will help with the ponding and the flooding here. We're hoping, and in order to facilitate that sidewalk construction, we're going to be filing a builder's pavement plan with the city, which works together with DOT, DEP, to get the sidewalk to where it needs to be to help with the flooding issues here along 37th Street. Haley, if, Haley, is there anything you'd like to add regarding the builder's pavement plan that we're going to have to file here at DOB?
Hi, guys. Just in case you can't hear me, can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you.
You can hear me. Okay, excellent. Yeah, and at current, the plan, we have an existing tree. We're going to be also proposing to add a tree along that back 37th Street entrance, so hopefully, you know, we'll go in and do everything along the proper channels between the builder's pavement plan, plan, and working with the Parks Department.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And just a quick follow-up, what is the plan to comply with local laws 92 and 94? Anything that you can add in terms of passive health design or energy on-site generation?
So, we're planning, as we know, we need to comply with the local laws, so we're looking into options for solar roof panels, green roofs, things to that nature. We haven't solidified yet how we're planning to, but of course, we're going to be complying with the local laws in order to get the building built.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin.
Hello. Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. The first was you said that Paperific has been a member of the community for 40 years. Where are they currently located?
So, they are currently located at this site. They are operating, I'm sorry if that was not clear, they have an existing building right now at the site. They're looking, they operate two supermarkets in Brooklyn, this one here on 38th Street, and they have another one on Coney Island Avenue in Flatbush. So, with this proposal, if it is approved, they would be shutting down their physical operation in order to enable the construction of the proposed development. They will continue with their online business, providing, you know, groceries and delivering groceries for their customers, and continue operating their Coney Island Avenue location. But this is an existing operational supermarket currently at 38th Street.
Okay, because it's just when I look at the pictures that were provided in our briefing, it doesn't exactly look like a supermarket.
Well, that's something that we're trying to, again, we note that the supermarket now does not really fit in with the context here, the way it has this big warehouse kind of look to it, but that is a supermarket. I've been there, I've bought things there, but yes, and that's part of our design approach here, is to try to build something that is more contextual and fit within the surrounding context.
Okay, and that leads to my second question, which is, given the design that you're tentatively showing us, how will people know? If I walked by this site currently, I wouldn't know that it was a supermarket that I could enter into and shop. And in the future, tentative design, I would not know that this was a supermarket that I could walk into. So, how will you So how will you communicate that to the generalized world? Or are you planning to mostly be an online-type business and delivery?
So as I said, A, because the Paperific supermarket has been existing there for forty years, the local community at least already knows that there's a supermarket there, but we will be providing signage, clear signage saying Paperific Supermarket over the ground floor frontage. If the design, the rendering here, um, the commission finds could use improvements, we are open to changing the ground floor supermarket design. Um, we are not married to this design, the rendering is illustrative, um, so we are open to changing that, but we definitely will have signage, the physical supermarket is a key component of their business, which is why they're also trying to expand and enlarge slightly their supermarket. Currently it's fifteen thousand square feet, under this proposal, they would go to approximately twenty thousand square feet. It would enable them to provide more amenities, including takeout counters, bakeries, which some of their competitors in the neighborhood are doing. So the, the physical store is very important to them, so if we need to improve the signage or make that larger, or, or change the design of the ground floor, we're, we're open to doing that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Seeing, uh, no other questions, um, for you, Mr. Gortz, um, we thank you for your time, and I will note that I do not see, uh, other, uh, members of the public wishing to testify on this item. So we will close the hearing on calendar number ten, eleven, and twelve, Paperific, uh, rezoning, and we will open the hearing on our next, uh, item. So Madam Secretary?
Thank you.
Borough of Queens, calendar number thirteen, two forty-five, zero six, South Conduit Avenue Commercial Overlay, CD thirteen, C two-three, zero-zero-zero-six, CMQ, Public Hearing, as a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning two forty-five, um, zero-six, South Conduit Avenue Commercial Overlay.
Great, thank you very much. And, uh, for this application, we have a presentation from, uh, Mr. Richard Lobel, and, uh, as I understand it, we have Kevin Neely, Kevin Williams, and Alexia Landisman available, uh, for questions and answers, all on Zoom. Welcome, Mr. Lobel, whenever you are settled and ready, you can go ahead and begin for two forty-five, oh-six, South Conduit Avenue.
Thank you, Chair Geradnik, Commissioners. Good morning, once again, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel P.C. Uh, thrilled here today to be joined by the applicant team, uh, especially Kevin Neely, the applicant here, who operates the tire fix shop at the premises. Uh, again, this is for the two forty-five, oh-six, South Conduit Avenue Commercial Overlay rezoning. Uh, this is a very straightforward rezoning from a C one-three to, C one-three to C two-three overlay. Next slide, please. So the applicant, uh, operates his tire repair facility at the premises and has done so for over fourteen years, is seeking this proposal to rezone, uh, these six lots from the existing R three-two C one-three to an R three-two C two-three zoning. Uh, this proposed rezoning would permit the continued operation of an existing tire sales establishment, uh, which is a use group seven, uh, permissible in a C two, but not in a C one district. Uh, next slide. The next slide is a copy of the zoning map where you can see, uh, the frontage of the property on South Conduit, as well as the existing zoning, uh, in the R three-two C one-three capacity. The next slide after that is the tax map, which shows, uh, in more detail, uh, this frontage and the area of the rezoning. The next slide being the area map demonstrates why we feel that this rezoning is particularly appropriate. You can see that, uh, South Conduit Avenue here is, along with Sunrise Highway, offers a, an extra wide thoroughfare in front of the property, uh, well able to handle, uh, C two overlay and the, uh, uses which would be, uh, permitted under that C two overlay, primarily here a use group seven, but also additional home repair and other, uh, similar uses. Um, you know, we know that, um, the most city planning sponsored rezonings now would offer a C two overlay in that they allow for a wider range of uses. This frontage is no exception. In fact, uh, on the northeastern portion of the block front, there's a gas station, which is a, a use which is permitted in a C two overlay, uh, with special permit, but is not permissible without, uh, this is actually a property subject to, uh, BSA variance. Um, the next slide is a copy of the zoning change map, again, a minor change here, one which has been sought repeatedly in applications brought by our office and others, uh, throughout Queens and throughout the city. Uh, the next slide includes pictures of the, uh, area, uh, subject to the proposal. As you page through the pictures, if you could, you will see that this is, um, typical of the area low-lying commercial businesses. Um, the applicant here has operated his business at the property, as I said, for over fourteen years, uh, purchased the property, uh, over twelve years ago, and, um, operated without incident or objection, and then, uh, has recently received objections for this, which is, uh, of course, one of the reasons we're here before the, uh, commission. And I note that my three minutes is up, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lobel. Let's just, uh, cover really quickly what is happening on the site that will be permitted under a C two that is not presently per-permitted today. Can you just lay that out for us?
Sure, so the, Chair, the, the activities on the site are, um, are tire repair and, eh, tire sales and, and accessory installation of such tires. So the business itself, which is operating, will remain unchanged. Uh, with regards to the facility there, it is intended that the applicant will now be able to redevelop that facility, uh, with a two-story facility, uh, which among other things would allow for entry of, uh, additional cars into the property itself, to get those cars off of South Conduit. So, uh, before this zoning change, currently right now, use group seven, uh, is, is the utilization of the property. After the zoning change, the same use would be there.
Okay, well, let me just understand it. Right now, it's a, it's a C one-three, you're proposing a C, a C two-three.
Correct.
Um, and there are certain uses that are currently, I understand they're not changing, but there are certain uses there that are not permitted under the current zoning, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, and then I, then I did not understand the answer to the question. So which are those uses which are presently not permitted? Is it the repair and installation?
Yes.
Is it the showroom?
No, no.
Or all, all of those things are not permitted?
Correct, use group seven is, uh, that designation permit, it would permit, um, tire sales and, and, and related installation of tires. So it's a fixed shop, uh, uh, local residents and others come in, uh, with blown tires, they are provided with new tires, uh, or repairs of existing tires, and those are put back on the car. So that, that all takes place at the site.
Okay, so that's what's happening now, that's what would be enabled with the zoning change to make it legal. Okay.
Correct, right.
All right, understood, thank you.
Of course.
Let me see if there are questions, other questions. Commissioner Ramperchad.
Thank you for the presentation. So after this rezoning is done, you're going to be filing with the Department of Buildings to obtain a new CFO for the building?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay.
And just as a, a side note, of course, with regards to this use of the property, just, uh, to, to reinforce exactly how appropriate is, appropriate this is, um, we note that, uh, the Community Board, uh, Community Board thirteen, both a land use and full board, voted in favor, as did the Queens Borough President. So we're hopeful that the commission will echo these, uh, strong statements in favor of the appropriateness of this use of the site.
Okay, noted, thank you. Okay, uh, I don't see, uh, other questions, uh, for you, Mr. Lobel, and I also do not see members of the public wishing to testify on this item. So we will close the hearing on calendar thirteen and move on to the next. Madam Secretary.
Borough of Queens, calendar numbers fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, twenty-three-ten, Queens Plaza South, CD two, calendar number fourteen, C two-one-zero-three-one-seven, Z M Q. Calendar number fifteen, N two-one-zero-three-one-eight, Z R Q. Calendar number sixteen, C two-one-zero-three-one-nine, Z S Q. Public Hearing, as a matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning tax amendments and special permit concerning twenty-three-ten, Queens Plaza South.
Great, thank you very much. We have a robust applicant team here, I'm going to call them out, they have ten minutes. Uh, they include Paul Parkhill, Penny Lee, James Davidson, Rob Osterlof, Brad Zaxson, Leo Mulvahill, Allison Carreri, and David Valles. Uh, and, welcome. All right, they're coming in. Give them a second, it's okay, it's all right, don't, don't rush, don't rush.
You guys got, uh, start right on time today.
You know, we always start on time here at the City Planning Commission, but, uh, thank you for taking notice of that, and whenever you're ready, you can get started.
Thank you. My name is Penny Lee, I'm a planner and I'm representing Dynamic Star. Actually, do you mind if I take this off to talk, or should I leave it on?
Encouraged, but not required for members of the public.
I'm happy to leave it on, okay.
Required for us and encouraged for you.
Got it, okay. Um, anyway, I'm Penny Lee, I'm a planner, representing Dynamic Star, and let me advance, let me figure out if I can, know how to advance. What do I do? Oh, all right, next slide, please. Nothing's happening. Okay. Okay, super. The, the picture's the same, it's just that when I'm rattling through the numbers that I'm referring to will also be up there on the screen.
It's done, you're on your next slide.
Yes, that's, that's good, thank you. Um, anyway, we are really happy to, to finally be here today to talk to you about twenty-three-ten, Queens Plaza South. Um, the proposed U-Lip applications will allow the existing loft building to be reused and enlarged into a twenty-six-story modern contemporary office building. Um, it will also be, we hope, the healthiest new building in Queens, with amenities intended to bring a, a residential comfort level to an office building. Um, four, four floor plate sizes ranging from twenty-seven thousand square feet in the Eagle Building to, um, about seventy-six hundred in the uppermost floors. Um, and those are gross square foot numbers, they're not the larger rentable square foot numbers. Anyway, it's a, it's a good diversity of, uh, floor plate sizes to appeal to a, a wide variety of tenants, both larger tenants looking to move out of Manhattan, or just smaller startup tenants. Um, rents will be competitive nationally. The public-facing components of the building are, are fairly extensive. Um, they'll include a twenty-four hundred square foot community space that will activate the Twenty-third Street frontage of the building, an Eagle Electric exhibit, um, that will feature, um, historic products that the company used to make, as well as the labor history of the company, will be located just off the lobby and activating the Queens Plaza South frontage. And then approximately twenty-nine thousand square feet of local retail space and restaurants will activate the, um, ground floor frontages along Queens Plaza South and Twenty-Fourth Street. There, there will also be approximately twenty-six hundred and fifty square feet of landscaped public open space on the roof of the Eagle Building. The tenant amenity spaces will include about thirteen thousand five hundred square feet and will include a gym, a half basketball court, and then on the roof, there will be a, a smaller space that will include comfort-type amenities such as yoga, lactation room, and, um, meditation space. There will also be, on the topmost floor, about six thousand square feet of a shared conference room and terrace, and then on the roof of the Eagle Building, there will be approximately fourteen thousand square feet of both landscaped passive space, and then under the overhang of the floor above, there's an opportunity to be, to do more covered active recreation space. And lastly, the building is going to be well-certified, um, meaning that physical space and operational strategies have been implemented across ten comprehensive areas to ensure employee comfort and well-being, and those ten categories are air, water, nourishment, light, movement, thermal comfort, sound, materials, mind, body, and innovation. And then lastly, I just want to touch briefly, because I know we're limited in time, um, to both the Community Board and Borough President, um, conditions, um, which Dynamic Star has agreed to. Um, we have begun outreach to local community groups about managing the, um, community space, and we have also started research, um, with internet providers to provide the sort of regional network system, and it's going to take us a little bit to identify the right people for each of those, but we have started the process. Um, and then in terms of the, um, Borough President's recommendation for, uh, to pursue lead gold or silver certification, we will most certainly try that, and I can speak more specifically to this during question and answer. Um, the issue with that is that it may compete with the goal of also being a well-certified building, but it's not something we're ruling out, it's something we'll, we'll certainly consider. Um, so then I just want to turn it over now to, um, Jim Davidson and Leo, um, who will speak to more detail about the building.
Good morning, uh, Jim Davidson, partner at S O C Architects. I want to thank you all for, um, inviting us and for, um, allowing this project to, uh, take this, uh, level of development. It's been maybe two and a half to three years since we've been working on this. And, um, ju-just to keep on this slide, uh, the, the strength of the, uh, building is based on the existing Eagle Warehouse, which you could see, uh, has a, uh, space that, uh, is right at the main roof of Eagle Warehouse, which is where we have a mix of, uh, office-oriented, uh, uses, as well as community-oriented uses. And we take that, uh, that, um, uh, module of the, um, Eagle Warehouse, and we repeat it as we go up the building. You'll see that the building, uh, sets back as it gets higher, and in an agreement with the residential building right behind it, um, we've, um, set that building back to afford better views for those residents. So this is something that's been ongoing, and, uh, since the, uh, overall form and shape of the building has been developed, uh, we've had, uh, some very useful meetings with, uh, CB two Queens, and they've actually been very helpful in evolving the, the life of this project, including the public spaces and access to the main roof. Next. Okay, so, uh, this, this gives you the, uh, orientation of the building, um, within the, uh, special, uh, L I C district. Next. And building design, that's next. So this is another view, and you could see clearly that the roof of, uh, Eagle Electric, the existing warehouse building, is just above the tracks and is an open view. So as you look out, even when there's a train, we envision that we'll just be able to see over the, uh, the, uh, roof of each of the train cars. We've noticed, by the way, that, um, the trains slow up at that point, um, so there isn't a high-speed, um, high dB rating, it is higher, but is not as high as you would experience if it were, um, a speeding train. Next.
Yeah.
So, um, here, here we have, um, the, uh, lower ground floor level, and we call it lower ground floor because of the, um, uh, grade changes throughout the site. There's about a seven to eight-foot grade change around the site, and at the lower portion of the site, to the left, you'll see where the community space is, uh, that we've been, uh, reviewing with CB two, and then you'll see the balance of the space, uh, for retail space and the imagery and the, uh, market that we're trying to look for here to reach out to is local providers. Local providers, not big box providers, but local providers to try to empower them and provide, uh, a market-oriented experience which will bring people in. The balance of the site is, uh, meant for, in this level, is meant for, uh, use of the office users, and there's a potential, um, in time for maybe, um, dedicated use after hours for the community. Next. So this is our first pass at the vision that we have for the community space, CB two, and, um, uh, while we will be responsible for the maintenance of the space and the care of the space, um, it will be, um, up to them to develop programs that they could use over time. So it's going to be more than just for meetings, but it could be for, uh, uh, entertainment and the like. Oh, am I running out of time? Okay, next. Okay, so the upper ground floor, you will see that the entrance, um, in a sort of, uh, in pale green, uh, the main office entrance is, uh, right off Queens Plaza South and is flanked on either side with retail uses. So the, the imagery that we're planning to have for this building is to activate all of the facades. facades for retail use. And you'll know if you've been to the site, it screams for active use. And Dynamic Star is very interested in doing just that. Next. So this is going to be the, this is the roof at the Eagle Electric building. And just to give you an orientation, the dash line that goes in the left-right direction indicates the footprint of the lower portion of the tower that's above this. So it's broken down into that portion that's down sheet, that's open to the sky, and up sheet of that dash line is open on all three sides, but covered. So that's going to be an experience that's going to be very, the year-round oriented, landscaped. And I'll leave this to our landscape designer to fill in the pieces for the balance of this floor. Thank you.
Rob Osteroff, MPFP Landscape Architects. Next slide, please. So just very quickly, this is the landscape plan for the proposed open space. Just quickly, we're trying to capitalize on the views here and provide enough space for people to be able to congregate and, you know, use the open space.
You're at time, so I'll pose the first question. Tell us a little bit more about this open space over here.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. So again, as building off of what Jim said, you come out of the core and try to utilize the space. What we're proposing is an elevated wood deck that you can step onto that will capitalize upon the views and while buffering from the proposed restaurant space, which you see adjacent to the core there, right, which would be under the cover of the building, right? So to be clear, the whole page south portion is all open to the sky. To the left would be the passive recreation space for accessory use of the office. And the open space for the public would be the bottom right-hand corner.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that landscape passive space at the top of the screen here, that is the side that faces over toward the train and perhaps will be just above the height of the trains as they go by. Is that accurate?
Yes. You could see on the left-hand side, the seven elevated line kind of curves up into the left. So it's really the left-hand plan and also that rear side, as you mentioned.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, there are questions? I have some, but I'm going to hold mine for a moment. Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioner Ramperchad, start.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Davidson, I guess I'll ask this question of.
Sure.
You know, you're obviously building atop a, an existing office building, but I assume you are creating structural elements within that, within the core of that building to support what you're building on top?
Yes, yes. The engineering actually has been done in the concept phase, which was about two years ago. And the spans or such within the warehouse are very generous, and they allow for steel to go through with new footings, separate from the existing footings, to ensure that they're going to be viable space.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Commissioner Ramperchad?
Thanks for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. You had mentioned earlier that you were doing community outreach. Can you just clarify further how that community outreach is being done, through local papers or in terms of the, based on the borough president's comments about submitting plans for advertising and wayfinding to inform the public of public spaces? Can you just clarify further?
Sure. We have been meeting regularly with Community Board Two, their land use committee. And then we've also been engaged with the Long Island City Partnership, because the building falls within the Business Improvement District. And then the partnership is also just a representative for businesses within the neighborhood. Regarding the borough president's recommendation for advertising the public open space, there was a, this came up during the discussion with Community Board Two as well, making sure that when the building is developed and the space is open, that we have adequate signs, you know, both at the, at the street level and in the retail and in the lobby to notify people that there is space up there. And particularly because it links to the retail space in the lower ground floor, there's definitely a way to do signage in there. And as I said, at street level. And then we'll also consult with the borough president and Community Board Two as to other ideas they have for getting the word out and ask them to get the word out as well.
Another question with regards to the cellar gym space for public use on nights and weekends. Have you given any further thoughts or?
Yes, we have, actually. We spoke with, Leo, I believe, was, I did some tentative calculations with our architects just to determine the actual capacity of the space. And so then, you know, as the building gets closer to occupancy, then we can start reaching out to neighborhood groups. Queensbridge Houses is just down the street. Jacob Rees runs a settlement house there. That's certainly, you know, one place that comes to mind that we would consult with in terms of finding out if they're interested in running programs out of the gym space. I mean, there are a number of community groups that we'll reach out to for that.
And my last question, on the plans that you brought up, at the lower level, the mechanical space you had there was like 6,400 square feet. The briefing package we have has 6,700. So I'm just curious, is there room to play with that to reduce the mechanical and, I guess, make the retail larger?
Well, there actually is, but we feel comfortable with the scope of the mechanical there is now because we're anticipating a higher mechanical load based on the wellness components that we're looking into. So we've budgeted a slightly larger amount than you would ordinarily experience within a conventional office building of this size.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of more commissioners who have questions. I'm just going to jump in here for two of my own. The first is, we are, we're looking at a special permit here, among other things. And the special permit findings include that the use and bulk changes here are aiding in the general purposes of this district, whether it's related to distribution of bulk or access to light and air and harmoniousness in the surrounding area. Can you just spend a minute or two and talk to us about those specific findings and why you believe they are met here?
Sure. The building, typically, the base height would be a minimum of 100 feet, maximum of 150 feet. And then there would be a setback of 15 feet on the narrow street and 10 on the wide street. 24th Street is the only narrow street of the three that the building fronts on. In this particular case, because the existing building doesn't, you know, it's lower than 100 feet, it's shorter than 100 feet, the fifth floor, rather than continue it up all the way, it sets back. And so it does allow for some additional relief at the street level. So you just have, it's roughly an 80-foot base, which is a comfortable pedestrian-scale base, but it's not so overwhelming as the 100 feet might be. And then the building also scales back. It's the, it's, we refer to it as the bustle. Why don't you speak to that?
So above the maximum base height, we start setting back by the 10 feet and the 15 feet. And then we set back even further in deference to the residential building just behind it. The, from a floor area ratio point of view, the entire block is already maxed out at eight FAR. So for an M16 and 15 FAR total, the commercial space seems to have been of much interest to the local community and in the planners for Queens. And that's what set us off on this path, to not only maintain and restore the Eagle Electric building, but to make it viable with the additional commercial floor space. The other thing that we were keen about was to preserve the, the character of the Eagle, of the Eagle Electric building with all of its delicate cornices, which are very much industrial deco of the time. And for that reason, we needed visually to raise the balance of the building up and set back with a glass enclosure to reinforce the fact that we are going to be restoring and revitalizing a presently derelict and dead building and bring it up to today's standards.
Appropriate out those spaces and the tenants.
And as it relates to adequate access of light and air, can you address that one too? Yes, well, as a commercial building, we have the adequate light and air. And we are asking for a variance for the 80 feet down to 60 feet, which would be typically what you would see on most, on most blocks for legal light and air. So what you're saying is the 60 is the norm in other places and is adequate in other places, therefore, we can meet the finding on that basis. Is that a fair statement? Correct. Okay. Okay. And one more for me. A lot of discussion right now about commercial office space in New York City and the future of work, the future of office space. Tell us a little bit, from your perspective, what story it tells that commercial office space is not only being proposed to be constructed, but here. Tell us how this, how we should contextualize this proposal. I'm going to introduce Brad Zaxson, principal of Dynamic Star, who could give you his vision on the kind of office use and occupants that we're going to be experiencing. Great, welcome.
Thank you. So we feel very fortunate that we were designing a building as we were looking for something that was futuristic in Queens. And when COVID happened, we took our design to another level to be, meet the healthiest building in New York and to help bring back employees to their work. We have taken a study and we are very proud that we have a building that's going to launch in Long Island City that will bring those tenants back at about a third of the price of what those buildings are in Manhattan right now that are leasing very quickly and everything else is sitting standard. Those buildings leasing in Manhattan do not have the recreational. They do have the wells. They don't have the outdoor space. Our windows will be opening. We have a whole program and we feel that our building will be the future of what office buildings need to be. And we are having, we open it to the national market and CBRE and us are very excited. We're actually launching. A sign was delivered today and we are in talks with tenants that would have not come to Long Island City. But we're also talking to some medical tenants also that are traditional. But we're looking at companies that would be coming to New York who can't afford New York, will end up here. So we feel like we have a special moment and we have a building that's ahead of everyone that's really spectacular for all of New York.
Thank you. And if approved, the rough timeframe of what you would anticipate for this development would, is what?
We feel that we will be in the market in less than 24 months. We are leasing, starting pre-leasing now, and we hope to build the building about 18 months. So sometime in, what, '25, we'll be open.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to build on the previous questions and focus for a minute on the response to the finding regarding bulk modifications. And where, and start by saying that I appreciate some of the language that reflects on the spirit of the, the special purpose history. And so specifically, on two fronts. One is on the importance of maintaining and protecting light manufacturing within that mix. So I have a couple of questions in that regard. And then the other one is the language that you've crafted here, which I think is really interesting in terms of maintaining the opportunity for people to walk, to work. So on the first item, I just wanted to understand a little bit, sort of how do you plan to maintain that balance? And what's the balance that we're sort of aiming for in terms of general commercial uses and light manufacturing? And with, with sort of like the idea to understand what are the indirect, the direct and indirect potential displacement on existing light manufacturing uses in and around the project site? You know, it's, it's clear that you're outside of the Long Island City industrial business zone, but you're literally across the street from it. And so I was, I'm hoping that you can, in your response, help us understand whether or not the outreach plan that Commissioner Ramperchad was asking about has included the IBC. What is sort of the status of your conversation with the industrial business community? That's the first question. Let me stop there and see what you think.
Um, the, I'm sorry, I just completely blanked on what I was about to say. The, oh, I know what I was going to say. The EAS, which was completed for the project, found that there was no direct displacement, right? I mean, the building's vacant, so we're not putting, Eagle moved out in approximately 2000. In terms of indirect displacement, 23rd Street is the boundary line. And on the other side of 23rd Street is that very distinct loft precinct of, you know, basically three to four to, maybe there's a five-story building among the precinct. A lot of those buildings had been light industrially used. There were a lot of creative industries in them. There were a lot of like upholsterers and other businesses associated with the interior design industry. And they were located generally on 23rd Street and 43rd Avenue. And fortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at it, those buildings have been converted and they are now generally office use. The Eagle Electric building itself, it's a, you know, former manufacturing building if there are industrial tenants that are interested. I don't think Dynamic Star is unwilling to speak to them, but, you know, there's also a certain degree of rent that would need to be paid to do that. There could be laboratory-type uses or other sort of high-tech industrial businesses that may be appropriate tenants for the loft building. And I, you know, I'm also aware of the building across the street from us on 24th Street, which is currently Apex Technical School. And I know that that building is about to be converted and enlarged for a life science building. So there may be also synergies with that development as well as across the street from us, and kitty corner across the street from us, a very large site is being repurposed as film studios. So there may also be synergies going that way, as well as with Silver Cup. And some of the spin-offs of the studios, you know, qualify as industrial businesses. So the zoning certainly allows it. And, you know, we just have to wait and see what the, what the marketing plan reveals.
Thank you, thank you. And that's, that's what I would love to, where I would love to encourage you to begin thinking about, you know, what is, how can you, what is the right mix that fits, that works for your proposal? But also specifically, how do you plan to do the outreach to those businesses, to that community, so that you can build on those synergies that I think are exactly right on? And then the other question is, associated with some of the sustainability measures that you've, you've included, I think that it's clear how you're already incorporating passive design in terms of the landscaping. You're also responding to some of the recommendations from the board in terms of electrification or at least infrastructure to support electric scooters and bicycles and so forth.
Right, right.
But I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about, sort of like, what's, what's happening on the rooftops? What are the plans to complying with potential on-site generation, energy generation, as well as green roofs, et cetera?
Um, Rob?
So as you guys are well aware, the DEP has required that, you know, we mitigate stormwater with filtration practices through sustainable landscaping, which we would propose on the rooftops here. Wherever possible, we'll specify native plantings and try to mitigate that stormwater through best management practices. Answer your question? In terms of stormwater and sustainability for the landscape.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I mean, and maybe as you move forward, it would be great to understand, that's just an intrinsic asset that comes through. But I would like to understand sort of what is the ultimate purpose? Because in this particular case, that sounds like a really cool opportunity to minimize, for example, air conditioning costs, given the fact that you're systematically incorporating mechanisms to reuse, reutilize stormwater. Is that, is that, that's how I'm reading your response. Is that right? Is that correct?
Well, the stormwater, the DEP requirements refer stormwater to be filtered through before it overloads the sewer, the storm system, right? So I can't speak to how it would impact air conditioning. That would be, you know, a discussion we would have with the engineering, right, with our engineering team. But in terms of sustainability for the landscaping, we're trying to, you know, mitigate the impact that the building would have, ordinarily have, right, on the storm system, right, through best management practices for filtering that impact, right, and not overloading.
No, thank you, thank you. And just to clarify, it's clear that you're meeting the requirement. What I'm saying is- No, thank you, thank you. And and just to clarify, it's clear that you're meeting the requirement. What I'm saying is highlighting, elevating a little bit the fact that you are actually thinking about how can the green roof alleviate
Absolutely.
uh, temperature uh, impact and so forth on the building and and how to maximize on the potential energy efficiency that could drive from that.
So so another aspect aside from the heat sink that um, that the landscaping at the roof would provide, uh, you'll note from the design that we have more of a punched opening look. This is not an all-glass building. So we're very sensitive to the need for a high-performance exterior wall, moving away from an all-glass facade. So that has always been a part of the um, of the calculus for the design of this building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Um, I was looking at your design for the communal, community accessible open space, which you said is on the roof of the Eagle Building. Will there be a separate elevator for the public to get there or will they have to go through security and?
Well, well, there there will always be a need for secured access, but we have dedicated an elevator, which we have on the plans in the appendix that shows access from that market directly across the lobby or below um, to that elevator that takes you straight up to that outdoor accessible space. Very clearly shown, clearly signed, and available at two levels, the lobby level and the market level at the lower ground floor.
And the hours of operation will be basically the same as pops for the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Buzzard?
Hi, yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, uh, you were speaking to this a moment ago. I really appreciate how um, kind of this blends the old and the new. Um, and you were talking about the facade and and the preservation of the existing building. Could you, it's hard to tell from the renderings. Could you just say a little bit more about what it is you'll be doing to the facade? What do you think someone from the street level is going to be able to tell it's an old building from here? It looks, you know, painted the same color?
Well, from the
Tell us a little bit more about what's happening at the facade level of the existing building.
Yes, well, the existing facade, if you've had a chance to walk by, is a paint finish concrete.
Right.
And what we're going to be doing is restoring the details, restoring the facade, but to bring it more into um, a a color that not only works with today's aesthetic of uh, what we refer to as industria, which is light industrial, research-oriented, um, as well as uh, as profession-oriented for the building above. We're keeping all of the details of the facade so that at the pedestrian level, you could appreciate uh, the distinct difference between the um, warehouse itself. And then you see that setback up above, and then above that is the modern office building. So it's really just the use of color that's uniting the two. But at the same time, there's a departure between the aesthetic of the existing warehouse building and a harking to uh, something that is more new, but more new age in the sense that we've learned from the past of a hundred percent glass facades as an example.
If if I could also just add to that, um, the building itself used to be gray. So we're bringing it back to the original color. Gray was kind of a typical Eagle Electric building paint color. And then there are also, um, I don't know if there's ceramic tiles, but there are little kind of ceramic mosaics um, all around the building that will be preserved and restored in addition to everything that Jim mentioned.
So we have that documented, which we could add to the presentation. We we have that photo essay.
We do have photos.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, I just commend you all for being so responsive to the BP's recommendations and and the inclusion of this historic exhibit that, you know, honoring kind of the past of this building while taking it to the future is really great to see.
Uh, if I could, we're also planning an Eagle Electric Museum that um, is visible and accessible from the lobby. And we're actually curating that right now, uh, so that people who walk in or can visit can get a sense of uh, the history of not only this building, but how it fits into the legacy of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I saw that.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, seeing no other questions from the commission uh, and no other members of the public wishing to testify, uh, we will close the hearing. I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, what have I done wrong?
We have two members of the public in Zoom.
Okay, I don't see them on my list. Let's see. Hold on. Why don't you, oh, here we go. I see them now. Okay, so we're going to relieve you all. Thank you very much. And I am going to call on the two members of the public who I do see now. Uh, Thomas Greck from the Queens Chamber of Commerce, to be followed by Andrew Toronto, the Long Island City Partnership. So uh, Mr. Greck, welcome. I know you are on Zoom, so if you can hear me and you are ready, there you are.
I hear you.
Whenever you are all settled, you, go ahead.
Thank you. Totally my pleasure. Thanks for all the hard work on both the folks at City Planning, and I mean that, for all this diligent work and also the developers. Good morning. My name is Tom Gretz. I'm the president and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. And I am in full-throated support of the rezoning for twenty-three-ten Queens Plaza South. As an aside, right across the street was the original headquarters of the Queens Chamber of Commerce many, many years ago, nineteen-eleven. And so it's coming home again in a certain way. Dynamic Star's new development will provide much important new office space for Long Island City, while importantly, also providing benefits to the direct community, including new ground floor retail with lighting, new landscaping, new community space, which is of great interest to us, and public rooftop access for truly amazing views. Dynamic Star will work with the local community to determine the right mix of small and local retail. We've already been in discussions about making some recommendations. And we've been also exploring potential incubator space that will empower Queens entrepreneurs to start their own businesses right here in Queens. We can see their strong commitment to the city through their labor agreement with thirty-two B J, proposed construction building operations. And not only that, construction will also be done by union labor, further proving Dynamic Star's commitment to providing well-paying jobs to the community. This is the kind of development and partnerships we need in Queens, the kind of team and project that is responsible, responsive to the need of the Long Island City community and the Queens community overall. For these reasons, the Queens Chamber of Commerce is in full support of twenty-three-ten Queens Plaza South rezoning. And I'm available for any questions. I yield my my time.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Greck.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, we appreciate your being here and taking the time to share those views and uh, uh, and we uh, I do not see questions, so I'm going to move on. Uh, but we we thank you for for your your presence here today. Uh, we're going to move on to Andrew Toronto.
Uh, good morning. I'm Andrew Toronto, and I'm speaking in favor of the application on behalf of Laura Rothrock, who's the president of the Long Island City Partnership and executive director of the LIC bid. Uh, the mission of the partnership is to advocate for economic development in LIC that benefits our neighborhood's diverse business sectors as well as the fast-growing residential population in Western Queens. In keeping with our mission, LICP believes that the proposal under the twenty-three-ten Queens Plaza South rezoning will have a favorable impact on the neighborhood. This proposal will bring many benefits, including a designated community facility space, new retail and commercial space, and permanent office shops, and much anticipated rooftop outdoor public space. The outdoor space for both building tenants and the public will be a refuge from the notoriously busy and noisy Queens Plaza. And LICP will be a partner in making sure that the public is aware of this opportunity. Uh, this project will enliven the streetscape of this gloomy corner of Queens Plaza with enhanced lighting and new space for local retailers. And on top of all this, the applicant intends to respect and preserve the history and architecture of the Eagle Electric Building. Uh, LICP applauds the successful collaboration between the applicant and the community to determine how this rezoning may provide the best possible benefit to the neighborhood while also reactivating this site. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, with that, Madam Secretary, I'm going to confirm with you that there are no other members of the public here, there, or not. Okay, and we will then close the hearing on calendars fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen to twenty-three-ten Queens Plaza South. Uh, and again, with appreciation to the applicant team and to those who have uh, come to share their views uh, with us by Zoom. Uh, and I will ask you to open the next item for us.
For Queens, calendar numbers seventeen and eighteen, twenty-five forty-six Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning, CD fourteen, calendar number seventeen, C two hundred two thirty-two Z M Q. Calendar number eighteen, N two-two-zero-three-three-zero Z R Q. Public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning twenty-five forty-six Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning.
Great. Thank you very much. We have an applicant applicant team who will present for ten minutes on twenty-five forty-six Far Rockaway. The team includes uh, Richard Lovell, Isaiah Multry, Erica Moore, Kevin Williams, Jackman Prescott, and Fayan Bettan, uh, all on Zoom. So I will turn to you all and whenever you are ready, please go ahead and get started.
Great. Thank you, Chair Gavodnik. Commissioners, once again, Richard Lovell of Sheldon Lovell P.C., joining the applicant Isaiah Multry for the twenty-five forty-six Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning. The rezoning would allow for the development of a five-story, forty-unit uh, residential development with ten affordable units at the site, uh, as detailed in the following presentation. So what do we seek to do? We seek to rezone four parcels and parts of two other parcels from an existing R four-one district to an R six-B district. The R four district designation has existed in some form since nineteen sixty-one. Uh, so this would allow for a productive use of the site, would allow for the development of much-needed housing in the area, and also importantly, of affordable housing. Uh, we do propose to map both options one and two to allow for flexibility. And this would result in the development at the site of a roughly thirty-three thousand square foot building, uh, again, with forty dwelling units, uh, inclusive of ten affordable units along Hartman Avenue between Far Rockaway and Beach Channel Drive. Uh, the development would also provide accessory residential parking spaces in the cellar and uh, on the ground floor. Next slide. So the zoning map demonstrates the existing zoning at the site, uh, which is R four-one. Uh, in addition, you can see that further afield within blocks of the uh, proposed R six-B exist our six zoning zoning districts, as well as some existing non-compliant buildings, existing at a height of four to six stories or in some cases even greater. So uh, this is not an area in which density is unknown, which is why we think that uh, the proposed district here is appropriate. The next two slides demonstrate the tax map, which shows the actual boundaries of the rezoning. Uh, we are dealing here with lots at a shallow depth of seventy and eighty feet, as well as the adjacent uh, parcel, which houses a two-story charter school uh, to a depth of a hundred and fifteen feet. So the zoning district would span these two blocks. Uh, the slide after this one is the area map, again, demonstrating uh, why we feel the uh, rezoning is particularly appropriate. Uh, you've got uh, excellent street uh, a street system around the area, Far Rockaway Boulevard being a wide street at seventy-five feet and surrounding uh, the area Beach Channel Drive and Ocean Crest, uh, immediately adjacent to the parcels. In addition, you have the uh, A train in which there's a wave crest stop, uh, two blocks from the uh, from the proposed development, uh, offering excellent transportation options. And again, as you look in the area of the property, there are uh, five and six-story buildings in the immediate area and taller buildings further afield. Uh, in my last thirty-six seconds, I would ask that you flip through the um, photos of the property. Uh, again, this is a partially vacant, partially underutilized lot. Um, this would allow for new productive development at the site. And importantly, Isaiah, who's the applicant, uh, is a product of the Rockaways and has been uh, in the area for some time. I's actually received consents from over eighty local residents as well as local church and youth employment uh, operators who have all uh, expressed their support and excitement at this project. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Lovell. Um, let me just pose a couple of questions, and they mostly relate to the specific challenges that uh, the project saw at the community board. Um, the proposed zoning map changed specifically, and also the inclusion of the non uh, applicant-owned lots in the proposal. Let's start with the first one on the R six-B. Um, you know, the, tell us uh, what you believe to be the importance of R six-B in this context. Uh, and while you're at it, because it will surely be a follow-up question for me, uh, tell us what the consequence would be for the project if uh, the council were to modify it downward uh, in this process.
So Chair, thank you for the question. This is an issue which has uh, arisen in this application and other applications uh, in which the applicant has sought an R six-B and through council modification, uh, you know, not saying that that would occur here, but the possibility arises that the application could be downgraded to an R five-D. Obviously, hugely important consequences in terms of affordability. Uh, this applicant and the circumstances of this application provide a perfect example of this. You have a fifteen thousand plus or minus square foot site. Uh, at an R five-D, the site would produce a thirty thousand, three-oh, thousand square foot building. Uh, at an R six-B, the site would produce here less than thirty-three thousand square feet. But although the difference in the development is not great in terms of square footage, there are two differences which come to play here, which are profound. The first is, of course, the R six-B would allow for twenty-five percent mandatory inclusion or using units, while the R five-D would not. And then secondly, which is important to this local area and other local areas where we've brought similar applications, the R six-B would allow for a fifth story and the R five-D would not, would only provide a four-story building. So um, you know, the applicant here in good faith has pursued an application, which is at R six-B. We feel clearly that the R six-B here is appropriate. The proposal, although again, we are here for a rezoning and not tied to plans, the proposal demonstrates a contextual building, which is uh, which blends in nicely with the surrounding residential streetscape. Um, the applicant here has a site which is located, again, for this area of Queens, it is very rare and important that it is located two blocks from a subway station. Transportation here is excellent. So um, that's that's basically the rub. We just, we are, we had a very thorough conversation with the community board um, and and presented very strongly about the R six-B. They were as strongly in favor of an R five-D. Uh, and importantly, particularly with Community Board fourteen Queens Chair, I would note that within the last year, they have passed resolutions, this is public record, that says that they have put a quote moratorium on the approval of any quote R six rezonings, uh, until such time as city planning engages in a more thorough review of um, of sustainability measures, uh, flood measures and such, because there are of course are as greater heightened concern in the area due to flooding, particularly in light of um, Superstorm Sandy. So that's the R six-B, R five-D discussion. And just to note at the end of the conversation, again, happy to for follow-up questions, but the addition of the school property to the north, we agree that it adds context to the rezoning. It's appropriate. Um, um, uh, and moreover, the existing two-story charter school there is already built to a one-point-five F A R. So uh, it is unlikely that it would redevelop in light of an R six-B rezoning, which would permit, you know, two, two to two-point-two F A R. Having said that, uh, again, we face pushback in certain areas where uh, the app, the um, local area and subsequently perhaps council members wish to reduce the scope to merely the applicant's site.
Okay, thank you. So let's start with the first one. Uh, if uh, if this were not an R six-B, but rather an R five-D, how many proposed units would be lost in this proposal?
Um, I think roughly eight units would be lost in the proposal, but importantly, the remaining thirty-plus or minus units, um, there'd be no required affordability there. So um, it's a, you know, this is like, it's so, it's so apparent here, because literally the numbers on this one chair come out to something two thousand plus square feet differential between those two buildings, but sadly, you know, and importantly, twenty-five percent in terms of affordability.
Okay, so it would go from forty units down to around thirty-two. The ten affordable would go down to zero. Um, and uh, and that's obviously a significant percentage change here. Um, okay. Uh, and as for the additional site, the Charter School Building, uh, so that is today, it's not compliant, correct? That building?
Well, the R, the R four-one permits, permits, interestingly, a two F A R for community facilities. So we can come back to the to the commission with that, but I believe it uh, is likely compliant. Uh, in terms of
So maybe it is not compliant in that it has too much lot coverage.
Oh, it's the height. We believe the height is non-compliant.
Okay, got it. So what what just, just as a refresher for us, for a school like that uh, in an area of a for a school like that in an area of a, that is potentially prone to, to a flood, what is the consequence for not being compliant with the zoning for them into the future? What would it mean for them? And what is the opportunity for that school to become compliant with existing rules?
Yeah, you know, I think if there was any redevelopment of the school at the site, then any new development, and, and, and I apologize for not being as fluent with regards to Department of Building Regulations, but any redevelopment and any new redevelopment would need to be flood-compliant in accordance with modern regulations. So it, it's merely conducive to, you know, redevelopment of a better building and a, and a flood-compliant building. But again, Chair, with regards to this, and also particularly with regards to an R5D-compliant building, we're happy to, to supplement the record and to resubmit on, on all these particularities.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see what other questions we have. Commissioner Bozorg.
I had a question during the review session about something that was in the racial equity report about how the project advances, I think where we live goal five, about creating opportunities for integrated living opportunities for people with disabilities. Is that, can you just speak a little bit more to how this project advances? Is that a nod to, to set aside within the lottery for those 10 affordable units? Or I couldn't understand what the reference was.
Yeah, admittedly, the, the racial equity reports are new. And, and so my understanding from conversations with our environmental consultants in preparation of the report is that the Borough Office at DCP is requesting additional language, you know, discussing integrated options. I think that this simply means that the building in any proposed development will be ADA-compatible. So I don't think that there's any greater meaning there in terms of the lottery or any preference, so to speak. But I think it's basically just, you know, on a going-forward basis that these buildings will be ADA-compliant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bozorg. Okay. I do not see other questions for you, Mr. Lovell. And I'm confirming that I do not see other members of the public on this one. Okay, great. So with that, thank you, Mr. Lovell, for your time and attention to this and the other matter today. And we will close the hearing on calendar 17 and 18, 2546 Far Rockaway Boulevard. And we will move to the last item on our agenda today. Madam Secretary.
Fehr of the Bronx, calendar numbers 19 and 20, 2560 Boston Road rezoning. CD 11, calendar number 19, C 220283ZMX. Calendar number 20, N 220284ZRX. Public hearing, as a matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning 2560 Boston Road rezoning.
Great. Thank you very much. We have an applicant team here which includes Jaclyn Skarnici, John Valladerez, Valladerez, sorry, Christopher Walker. And then we have members of the public on this one. And good afternoon, or good morning still, welcome, and whenever you are ready, you can go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jaclyn Skarnici from Acreman. And I'm also joined here by John Valladerez of Slate Property Group, as well as our architect, Chris Walker from Osking Architects. And with that, I will turn it over to John, just to give you a brief overview of Slate.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is John Valladerez. I represent Slate Property Group. We're a New York City-based developer. I focus my time at Slate solely on the development of affordable, supportive, and transitional housing. The images here are most recently completed project in the Tremont section of the Bronx. 100% supportive housing project partnered with a nonprofit by the name of West Hab. We're here to talk about 2560 Boston Road. These are some images of the existing conditions today, which is basically an existing supermarket, a lot of parking, a lot of asphalt, and a lot of unfriendly pedestrian experience. What the site does have that's really great is access to public transportation, where, and located in a transit corridor with a short five, 10-minute walk to the 2-5 train. And great, great bus transportation. What we're proposing at the site is a 100% affordable development. It's approximately 330 units of affordable housing. We have been contemplating using HPD and HDC's Mix and Match program, which really gives us a lot of flexibility in the AMI bands as it relates to HPD term sheets. In addition to the affordable housing, a big component of the project here that's been very important to the community is the retaining of the local fine-fair supermarket. We have an agreement with the supermarket operator to temporarily relocate off-site during our construction period and then return to a brand-new supermarket site for the community. In addition to the supermarket, we have about 4,000 to 5,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, TBD tenant. We're working, we're open to working with the community, and we've reached out to the local merchants association to have ideas and feedback on what kind of tenancy the community would like to see there. We also have approximately 6,000 to 7,000 square feet of community facility space. Again, we don't have a tenant in mind here. We really set aside the space as a community set aside so that, you know, the community needed this type of space, we would have it available in the project. And then finally, we have 117 parking spaces on-site. 67 of those spaces are related to zoning required spaces for the higher AMI units under the Affordable Program. And then the remaining 50 spaces were a concession to bring the supermarket operator back to the program and back to the site. As I mentioned, I won't go into detail on this, happy to answer questions. This is HPD's Mix and Match Program, which is very high-level. 40 to 60% of these units are up to 80% of AMI. We tend to seek, you know, the higher end of that, so we would seek 60% below 80. And then the remaining 40% are between 80 and 120%. Any program we would do here would seek to, to find units at the lower end of this band, but that is a conversation with HPD when we get to the financing component of the project. I'm going to hand it over to Chris Walker to walk through some of the design in more detail.
Hello, my name is Chris Walker from Osking Architects. So you can see here the ground floor, looking at the corner of Boston Road and Matthews, we have the 15,000-square-foot supermarket with the main entrance coming off of the roughly 4,000-square-foot open plaza. It has connected with a 1,400-square-foot loading berth. There is an additional 4,300-square-foot commercial space at the corner of Boston Road and Barnes Ave. We have two residential lobbies for the proposed development, one off of Barnes Ave and one off of Matthews. And additionally, we have the 5,700-square-foot community facility space along Matthews with 1,500 square feet on the ground floor and the remaining square feet above on a mezzanine level. In the back and the interior of the site, you can see 50 spaces proposed for the commercial use. And then along Matthews, you can also see the cellar parking ramp that goes down to the 67 spaces for the residential. Moving on to sustainability, the project will utilize the Enterprise Green Communities Program, solar power, solar panel roofs, solar panels on the roof to further reduce building emissions, to mitigate stormwater runoff. We're proposing green roofs, permeable surfaces, as well as a stormwater detention tank. And to further increase the efficiency of the building, LED lights will be used throughout. The apartments will have Energy Star appliances, and the building will have an enhanced building envelope. Pass it on to Jackie.
Okay. So just to give you an aerial to kind of hit on the land use rationale for the application. The site's location is extremely important here, on Boston Road, a major commercial corridor that runs through the Bronx, 100 feet wide, an area that can support additional density. You can see the two and five lines highlighted, just four blocks from the site. The BX 26 runs just one block from the site. And just, you know, just looking at the proposed land use actions, we're asking, currently the site is split between a C81, which is mapped to 100 feet on Boston Road, which doesn't permit residential use. And then the remainder of the site is R6. So that would permit residential housing. And a lot of the, there are a lot of walk-up six-to-seven-story buildings already within, within the block. But with the proposed rezoning, we're, we're asking for an R72C24, given the access to transit, location on a wide street that I was just hitting on. And also asking for a zoning tax amendment to designate the area mandatory inclusionary housing. As John stated, the entire proposal is 100% affordable. But mandatory inclusionary housing will lock in permanent affordability, proposing both options one and two here. And, you know, I think the mix and match works with both options, but just given the AMI levels, I mean, this will be at the option of the council member. But, you know, both options are proposed here for that. And with that, we finished early, so if you have any questions, we would love to answer them.
Great, thank you. I've got a few. Hang on one second. All right, great. I'm going to start with Commissioner Marine, and then go on to Commissioners Bozorg and Kramani. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. I know there are a lot of questions, and I'll give time for the others. But mine is specifically relating to the MIH and compliance of the units. Doesn't HPD usually require, on an MIH situation, a not-for-profit partner who's going to provide the compliance of the units?
Yes. So for, for the mandatory inclusionary housing program, you are required to have a not-for-profit organization. This is 100% affordable, so you'll have to have a managing agent that's approved for the tax credit.
That would, that is a compliance monitor at the end of the day.
Yes, a compliance monitor.
So it's either the, the not-for-profit or the managing agent?
It's typically a nonprofit, but-
That is correct. That's why I'm asking the question. Who is going to be that nonprofit that is going to provide the compliance?
So we haven't selected a nonprofit yet. We have identified a local nonprofit, NIDC, who would like to assist in the marketing of those units, but they're not an approved HPD managing agent. That's something that the nonprofit wants to work towards. What we've committed to is if they can't become a managing agent, we would identify another local nonprofit to be the official managing agent. But we felt it was important to have a local nonprofit, whether they were the managing agent or not, help assist us in identifying local community members and assisting them in completing the lottery, getting their paperwork in order in order to apply for those lottery units. So while we don't have the official managing agent, we have a commitment to work with a local nonprofit to either be that managing agent or to work in partnership with that managing agent.
And so you're saying you have not identified them yet?
Correct.
The managing agent is going to assist folks who do not understand how to apply to the lottery, to apply to the lottery?
Correct.
To be a little bit more successful than folks in the community, and then they will also do the compliance at the end of the day.
Correct. And we, what I'm saying is, we also have a local nonprofit, a strong nonprofit, NIDC, who will assist that managing agent in community outreach, making sure that community members know about the opportunity and know how to take advantage of the opportunity.
Do you know who that, that IDC is that's going to be assisting?
It's NIDC. It's a, it's a local existing nonprofit in the area.
Okay. And then my, my last question, and I'll leave the floor for everyone else. You know, I just heard a mention of two residential entrances. So is this intended for all, for all intended purposes, this two separate buildings? Or is it one building with a common hallway with two separate building entrances?
It's one building, two entrances are really for convenience. You have a primary entrance and really a secondary entrance for convenience in the building. Since it's such a large building, we have two elevator cores. Instead of just putting them in one central location and having everyone traverse the entire building to get there, we've separated the core for convenience for the tenants.
And that brings into question, brings into mind another question. So if you're having two separate entrances, what is the building department entrance? Because folks are going to need an address, and they're going to need to receive mail. So is there going to be one address for the building? How is that going to happen?
There'll be, we haven't gotten that far with DOB yet on the filing side. Typically, you'll file a topo for one address. It'll have one main entrance and the second, it'll be a secondary entrance, which is not uncommon in, in some of the larger buildings in the cities.
No, it's not. I just, I just wanted to see how you were thinking about it.
Yeah, we have, I don't think we're that far yet, but it would have one main entrance that would be the DOB topo address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozorg.
Hi. I was wondering if you have a sense of where you sit in HPD's pipeline for development? And, and just projected sense of when you could actually even close on this project? And then if, if, if late, does that, is there, I, I know Slate's affordable arm. Is there any risk of this project moving away from an affordable project post-approval if you're late in the pipeline? Just if you could speak a little bit to Slate's practices with pipeline?
Sure. So we don't have pipeline allocation yet, and I think to HPD's defense on that, you know, until the project is approved, they tend to not. I will say HPD is excited about this project to the extent that not a lot of affordable housing gets built in the district. I think this council district has seen less than 100 units in, you know, the last 20 years. So when we brought this to HPD, they were very excited about the opportunity of creating affordable housing in an area that hasn't gotten any. In terms of Slate's commitment, we have an agreement with the existing landlord for this project. We have a long-term option on it, so that will not hinder or cause any change in plan as related to the affordability here. We are committed to 100% affordable housing here.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Kramani and then Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just want to raise, I have the same concern that the, or question that the Borough President raised, one of them, which we've seen a lot in affordable housing developments, which is the low number of larger family unit sizes. There are 149 one-bedrooms, 84 studios, 52 bedrooms, and 53 bedrooms. Can that be revisited?
Absolutely. I think that'll be fine-tuned while we work with HPD on the financing, the affordability, and, and further design. We totally think that could be something that could be worked on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. What is the AMI in Board 11?
56,192.
And how would that, in the context of the Mix and Match, how would that?
It's approximately 60% AMI. It's, it's about 60% AMI. So on the Mix and Match program, 40 to 60%, 60% of the units, essentially what we would do, would be for AMIs below 60%. I'm just going to click back to that slide, sorry. So 60% are up to 80% of AMI, with 40% of the overall at extremely low or very low, which are between 30 and 50. So 40% of the building would be at a minimum between the 31 and 50% of AMI, which is significantly below the area median income. And then the higher portion of the building, 40%, 40% of the building would be between 80 and 120. And given the low relative AMI in this neighborhood, we would skew that to the lower end of that band. We don't see 100 or 110 or 120 AMIs being really feasible here. It would be on the lowest end of that.
Good, thank you. What is your projected construction time? When do you foresee, assuming there's approval here, when do you see the completion of this project happening?
The big question mark is HPD pipeline. As Commissioner Brodak mentioned, it's difficult to, to gauge when you'd be able to slip into an HPD pipeline via, given the constraints on volume cap. We, we can envision closing a year from now if HPD would allow us into their HDC pipeline. And then it would be a 24 to 30-month construction from there.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Let me just pose one quick question before I go to Commissioner Rampershead about parking. My understanding is that there's a certain number of parking spaces that will be attributable for, to the supermarket. 50, is that right?
Correct. 50 surface parking spaces.
And then you also are anticipating offering some number of parking spaces, perhaps 67 for the building, is that right?
Correct, for code, for the units above 80% AMI.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yes, for the units above 80% AMI.
Okay. And the requirement that you are required to provide here is what number?
Sixty, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, sixty-seven.
Yeah.
So from where you said 67 is the number that you're required to provide and that is what you are providing. Correct, okay. All right, Commissioner Rampershead?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I remember when this came up for certification, I brought up this plaza design. I was just wondering, have you guys given any more thought to it? Because to me, it just looks like it's just a tree in the center. Are you going to put up any fencing? Are you going to put any benches? This is a massive project. I'm just wondering if there was any more thought process in regards to designing something here. I know it's not a big space, but, you know.
Right, we're, we're currently actively looking into providing some, some seating and, and a better redesign of that public space, I guess.
Okay. When you do have that, if you can just forward it to us, it'd be great to see. Also, are you going to have restriction times on loading for the supermarket? Because I know both the, the access, the curb cuts are next to each other, so I'm just curious if you have a restriction time for the supermarket to get deliveries.
We, we haven't considered that at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you Chair. Just a quick follow-up question to the Chair's question. Can you clarify, how many parking lots are you required to provide for the supermarket? And how does that compare to the 50? And correct me if I'm wrong, it's the 50 that you're proposing, right?
Yeah, so we are not code, zoning does not require any parking for the supermarket. We're really providing those spaces as an accommodation to the existing supermarket who felt very strongly that in order to maintain their business there, parking really is required. So as an accommodation to bring back a supermarket that the community really wants us to keep here, we agreed to provide those 50 parking spaces.
Thank you. I, I wanted to ask you a little bit about that because this is something that I had noted in the past, given sort of, you know, the strong transit infrastructure in this neighborhood. Shouldn't we be discouraging automobile use when we have such an important public transit? I mean, of course, there's specific users that will need specific requirements, but help us understand how does that fit into the rationale, the land use rationale and the decision to provide so many unrequired parking lots?
We don't disagree with you with the need to, to reduce, you know, the city's dependence on parking. I think part of it is the, the reality of balancing that with market demand for the supermarket operations. That operator essentially, you know, was requiring us to return those spaces in order to, for us to secure their commitment to bring that back. So we, we see it as a little bit of a give and take on the project that, we retain those parking spaces that are there. We see the win of bringing a supermarket back to the community and we really didn't feel like we were in a position to risk losing such an important component of the neighborhood. One of the biggest comments we got at the community board process was the importance of the supermarket. And, you know, to some extent, there was miscommunication. Some people thought that it was leaving temporarily and not coming back, and there was strong sentiment against any potential risk of losing the supermarket. So we understand your concern. We share those concerns, but we felt it was needed in order to retain an important component of the project.
I, I encourage you to think about this and maybe explore other options to maintain sort of like the availability of parking spots for supermarket users. There are opportunities to work with DOT to adjust parking meters, for example, in adjacent streets, et cetera, to make sure that the supermarket can function. It's just that in the light of an affordable housing crisis, and I commend you for sort of like the, the, the land use rationale and the commitment to increasing affordable housing, but we should be building more housing if we have the opportunity, not more unrequired parking lots.
We completely agree.
Thank you very much Commissioner. Okay, that's, those are the questions that I have from the Commission, unless I've missed somebody. No, I have not. Great. Thank you all for your presentation. I will, uh, thank the applicant team for, for being here. And now I'm going to call on members of the public who are here to testify or are on Zoom here to testify. And I'm going to start with Grace Marrero, who is in fact on Zoom. And Ms. Marrero, whenever you are ready and settled, you can go ahead and, and begin.
Okay, thank you so much. I am a resident, longtime resident here on the Allerton Avenue area. I am the Chair and Founder of the Allerton Avenue, Allerton Barnes Block Association. I represent the homeowners and the residents here, not the local merchants association. They never told the residents of anything about this. We found out, we got blindsided by NIDC, by AIM and possibly the, the AHA. So we're not happy. What you're talking about over there on Boston Road, Boston Road is not a residential corridor per se. That's mostly for, for industry. You have, the supermarket is our only supermarket to go to if you're, especially we have a lot of elderly, disabled people that rely on that supermarket to go to. The building itself is way out of proportion. 10 stories is just too much, too much for that. That is all residential there. You have on Barnes, it's all residential. You have a few, maybe three or four family houses there, maybe one six-story at the end of the block. On Matthews, it's mostly residential. And then you have St. Lucy's Church right at the end, which the rectory takes up a, a big portion of that street. So it's mostly residential. And so this, and the homeowners do not want this. They're going to be forced out to sell their homes. They don't want this there. It's an eyesore. It's going to bring in elements that we don't need here. Our, our neighborhood is already inundated with, crime has gone up because of the elected officials, bail reform and all these other things that they've been doing to us. And I just want to address the Commissioner who said that we don't need parking. Sir, you don't live here, so you don't know what you're talking about. We need parking here. We're not looking to get rid of cars. We have cars. We need the parking. We need parking in the whole area, not just for the supermarket. We need parking. Those new residents that are going to be coming in, they're going to need parking. We don't have the infrastructure to support these new residents that are coming in. We don't have the schools. The police are overworked. The fire department can't handle it. Sanitation can't handle it. We don't have the infrastructure for that. And there's no plans to increase anything. The, oh, where was I going? The, like I said, the building itself is a monstrosity. It will take away our airspace, our skyline to see. It's just not feasible. They snuck by us that rain building, which is what, like 12 stories? That's the only building. That got snuck by us because we don't get informed. We're tired of not being informed.
Thanks. Your time. Thank you. Okay, there's a question. Commissioner Goodrich?
Okay, um, my, well, you seem like a very straightforward person. Thank you for your testimony. My, I, my question is, well, I, you know, I think a lot of times with these sorts of when you have a, a proposed housing development and it is mostly income restricted, and then you have residents who are opposing it, the question always comes up of whether the true reason is because it is low-income housing that's coming in the area. You mentioned a couple of things like bail reform and, you know, different elements. And so I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that because quite frankly, I do think that that will be a narrative here that will be thought of. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond. And the question specifically is, what is your response to folks who will say that your opposition and other homeowners' opposition is because they don't want low-income housing in that area?
Well, in response to that, they would be incorrect because we already have low income. The residents here don't make $56,000 a year. The AMI is skewed. It's a scam and it does not reflect the, the income that we have in, in the Bronx in general, for the most part, with a few exceptions here and there, Riverdale. But the income in the Bronx is nowhere near that. Our, to get into a building like that, it should be based on what our true income is, not the AMI. We need, so we already have low-income people here. We're struggling with people, we got homeless people, we have substance abuse, and we already have low income. And it's also very discriminatory because the majority of the population, and I'm talking about in the heart of Allerton. I'm talking from when you go right past Boston Road to, to the train station. That's the heart of Allerton Avenue, not going further up where you have, it's all homeowners up that way. So the heart of Allerton Avenue is Hispanic. The majority are Hispanic. They can't afford anything that, that you guys are proposing, first of all. And second of all, you've never given dimension to any of the apartments. So we, we can't afford it. So we'll be, we won't be able to get in, period. And then again, the, the supermarket problem, where are we going to go for shopping for food? I don't have a car to go drive. I have to walk to the supermarket. Many people don't have cars that live in the heart of Allerton. They walk to the supermarket. They walk on Allerton to the stores. So this project is, one, discriminatory against the Hispanic community; two, discriminatory against the disabled community; three, discriminatory against the senior community. So that's three strikes right there. And just to throw this in as an aside, the person, the business that they plan on, on getting rid of, to move Fine Fair to, is a thriving business that has been in the neighborhood for over 22 years. They're going to get kicked out of their place so Fine Fair can relocate temporarily. So they're going to disrupt a thriving business, not one that's failing, thriving business. They're going to disrupt a lot of things here. We need the parking there. We need to shop there. We can't have it, Fine Fair relocated. It's just not good all the way around, the way you guys have, have proposed this using the AMI. Now, if you want to propose the rents using everybody's individual income, then do that. That would be more fair and then a lot of people would be able to afford to move into a nice new building. But until that's done, we are not for it at all. The homeowners are up in arms about it. The residents, I represent not just homeowners, but tenants. I'm a renter. I've been a renter my whole life. So we're not, it's going to bring too much stuff into this community. We don't have the, we're already inundated with, with people. We're already, we're diversified. We're like probably the most diversified neighborhood out of all the neighborhoods here. And we already have, this, this part of the Bronx is, has many people.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Let, let me just jump in with a question. Would, would you just say a little bit more about, you know, we, we obviously have, we're in the middle of a housing crisis and we want to make sure that there is housing for people of all incomes in all neighborhoods. Say a little bit more, when you say that there are elements that we don't need here, what exactly you mean?
It's, listen, we're being, we're being, we're being attacked in every part of the Bronx, not just here with this, I say, you call it affordable housing. It's not affordable. It's not, we have buildings that are empty or that can be, that can be affordable, but need to be renovated. Why not help the, the homeowners and the building owners that are here now to renovate their buildings to make it more affordable, to make it more attractive to people to come in? You guys are looking to bring in working people, as I've heard you say in other meetings. You know, they're not going to be happy here because they're, quite frankly, they're probably going to get mugged, okay? In plain English. It's not, it's not.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Marrero. Thank you for, for your time. Okay, I don't see other questions here, so I'm going to move on to Roxanne Delgado, who I believe is here in the room. Ms. Delgado, welcome.
Morning Commissioner. Thank you for your time. My name is Roxanne Delgado. I'm the founder of Friends of Palm Parkway. It's a environmental and social justice community group. I'd like to begin with the BP's recommendation. She states that the mix and match program was 60 and 130 AMI. That's incorrect. She used that premise to make it seem like it was affordable to the community impacted within the point, quarter-mile radius and half-mile radius of the project site. So actually, AMI ban limits are 80% and 120% AMI. So I'd like to correct that because that was her premise on why this was affordable to the community. Second, I'd like to disagree, disagree respectfully with the BP and this commission, please, because there will be significant adverse environmental impact on the community of over 15,000 residents within quarter-mile radius of this proposed site. This commission, elected, should take a hard look at this rezoning potential to accelerate the displacement of lower-income residents. All information regarding this rezoning potential to accelerate displacement should be presented, analyzed, and I argue this was not the case here. Example, within the point twenty, within the quarter-mile radius of this proposed project, it's a population increase change of over 5.8%. But when the population change is half a mile radius, which increases three times the population size, the population change is only 2%. And therefore, they argue because it's less than 5%, no further analysts to determine whether this proposed project would be so indirect displacement. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
I'd argue, I'd like to argue that when you use the quarter-mile radius study area, the percent of renters are 85% renter occupy. Within a larger study group of half a mile radius, it's 79%. But within the proposed site in the NTA, the neighborhood tabulation area, it's 83% renter occupy. So I would say based on the quarter-mile, quarter-mile radius and the NTA, it is over 80% renter occupy. Now, using both half a mile and quarter-mile radius of the proposed site, the median household income is less than $45,000 and half of the population makes less than $50,000. And the AMI 2022 number, 80% of AMI is $75,000 and 120% of AMI is $112,000. With the population increase of over 5% in the quarter-mile radius and the income requirement for this project income ban, which is much higher than the $45,000 median income, where over half of the community makes less than $50,000, we need a hard look at the potential displacement of low-income tenants. I also looked at the racial equity report, using Puma, which includes Morris Park, Indian Village, Palm Gardens, which would, I have to make race a little, have to make that out of the majority, homeowners, black and white, who make professional, blue collar union jobs. But where I live, in this proposed site, is mostly Hispanic, which uses the NTA BX07, which is now 1104. Over 80% are non-white, the majority are Latinos. Over 50% are below poverty. 33% are severely rent-burdened, with almost half of them of the units are not rent-stabilized. And if you look at the map, if I could use that, it is the highest displacement map in your equity site. It's pure purple, but it has the highest displacement map, which at risk, what I'm asking you, please do environmental impact statements to analyze the potential indirect displacement that would take action if you do this proposed action. Because half of the renters lack the protection and rent regulation. And I just, they have a notorious history with displacing renters, harassing renters, evicting Section 8 renters. Just Google real deal. A nursing home, it's unfair to put this predator in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if there are, there are questions. Commissioner Goodrich has a question for you.
Hello. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions to expand on what you're saying. So my first question is, if the AMI here, what would be an appropriate AMI that you would want here? Or is it just that the AMI period?
Oh, thank you Commissioner.
Is going to be helpful.
In my humble opinion, from doing a lot of research, I would say the ELLA program, within 30 to 40%. Because if you use the Community Board 11 medium income, which is $55,000, you're adding all the homeowner's income. And we have, our Community Board 11 has a big portion of Morris Park, Palm Gardens, Indian Village. As most people know, those are million-dollar homes, with working, professional jobs, union workers, retiree, retirees. But then where I live, where I live right next to Nike, Palm Parkway houses, we are the working poor. We are the people of color. We are the immigrants. We are the foreign-born people. And we, I pay over 50% of my income for my rent because I was displaced due to, either my whole payment base was flooded, had to move out. I'm paying almost 60% of what I paid before. I am rent-burdened. I want low-income housing. I welcome real low-income housing.
Okay. So the specific suggestion here? Um, so the specific suggestion here is that the eight, and I, you know, quite frankly, I also have issues with the very high AMIs. Um, so the AMIs are too high and if they were lower, then that would be satisfactory.
Definitely.
Basically that.
It will always have negative impact, but at least it will benefit the community. Why should we be burdened with no benefits?
Okay.
So I'm, I understand, I'm like.
I think there was a suggestion earlier that there should just be no AMI, that nothing's going to be satisfactory. So I'm glad to hear.
AMI is not scam. It should not skew to include West Side, but nonetheless, it's flexibility based on the program. Like the mix and match might be better in Upper West Side, Upper East Side. But in where I live, it's not affordable. It's the truth. Look at the numbers, not my opinion, just the data. You, you guys have more data, more knowledge than I do.
Commissioner Bozard and Commissioner Marine and Commissioner Osorio.
Thanks. I think, I think your second question clarified what I wanted to understand, but I'll just ask, ask it again. So, um, unlike the, the last speaker, what I'm hearing is that, um, this is a project you would support if it had, was more deeply affordable.
I.
And, and not that you don't think any affordable housing is needed, but just more deeply affordable housing is needed on this site.
As a person severely rent burdened, who lost everything due to Ida last year, last September.
Yeah.
I welcome a low income. I'm, I'm a person of color. I welcome more people of color. I'm not into, I don't want those people, those are my people. I'm one of those people.
Understood, I just want to.
I want it to be affordable and it will have negative impact. It's a given, everything has burdened the existing infrastructure, especially when we have limited, I don't disagree with that. But if we're going to take the burden, why is not some benefit? If not for me, maybe my neighbor can afford it.
Thank you so much for your time.
We don't want to displace our community.
Okay.
And then my last question, quick question. Say a bit more when you talk about, because I, I read your comments too in the news article about the density part. So I think that's what, um, our first person was testifying to. And I'd love to hear a bit more about, since you live in that community, how you think this will impact positively or negatively the density part? Because it's already a bustling, it seems like it's already a bustling area. So I'd love to hear more your thoughts about what this density argument is.
I live right off two blocks north of this proposed site. I live on Astor. And well, I can tell Palom Parkway, a lot of people, we have a high density in apartments because of lack of affordability, where it does a lot of damage to plumbing. And that's why my place was, um, flooded because of sewer system, even though the New York City Council didn't agree with that. We had a lot of sewer issue, uh, burden on our sewer system. And we're in a flood zone, Palom Parkway, which is not two blocks from this proposed site. Um, the lack of transit, I mean, we, we are lucky that we have transit. The lack of viability and frequency, especially with the bus lines, less frequent, uh, burden on our, um, schools. The, the actually per your own report, the elementary schools have no available seats. They're over a hundred percent over capacity. Any semi additional elementary school per your report will just make the negative. And at least with the middle school and high school, they could go elsewhere, outside the school district eleven. Elementary kids, that's not, uh, that's not ideal for them. They need to go to their own schools. But schools for me, environmental issue, like, um, okay, I'm not trying to do mud slang, but I don't, I don't think they're trustworthy. There was a negative condition based on the sampling of the soil and the work done. I want to make sure they don't pollute us. Because some people don't think we're worth, we should be considered equal. They think we deserve less. Let's pollute them, let's dump them, they're just animals, they're savages. We're not. I'm a human being who devotes all her time to my community. I'm here sacrificing my time and my resource to be here because I care.
Thank you very much and we appreciate very much your being here.
Thank you.
Um, to share your views.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Marine.
Sure.
Don't go, don't go yet, don't go yet. We appreciate you, but also want you to stick around another minute.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So, um, I just wanted to clarify something that you said and help try to educate you to understand. And I do take note of your points. I lived on Kruger Avenue for about twelve years, so I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, right from Astor Avenue, right from Astor, up perpendicular to Astor. Um, this is a, a community that has not seen any affordable housing for a while. And the intent here, from what we hear, is to meet the sixty percent of area median income that comprises the entire community, which is equal to fifty-six thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars. Now, I do understand, I do know that Indian Village, you know, uh, uh, all those neighborhoods that you mentioned that are in the, at the periphery of Pelham, all of Pelham, basically, are a more affluent community. However, in the average, it is a fifty-six one hundred ninety-two thousand dollar a year salary. And that goes as low as thirty percent as committed by the development team. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that because it, it seems like there is this, this notion that they're going to bring in folks that are not, bring in a unit that are not going to be appealable or financially, financially economic to the community. And what I will tell you as well is that through, because this is a one hundred percent AMIH project, there is a lottery. And those requirements are need to be met and they're checked by HPD. Once that's all set, there's a compliance monitor who makes sure that the next tenant that comes in, should a tenant leave, meets those guidelines. The intent and purpose is here is to also include purchasers from the community to be able to come in, excuse me, renters from the community to come in, to be able to rent that qualify. And they've committed to working with the National Neighborhood Initiative Development Corporation on Matthews Avenue.
Yeah, I know who they are, yeah.
To make sure that they can help you guys understand the process and to apply. And I think that it would be benefit, it would be of benefit to you, because you're representing a certain portion of the community. And I do know the projects that you're talking about, they're right up the block. Um, that to work with NIDC to try and get as many people in the community to come in to apply. We do have a very, a big housing crisis throughout the city of New York and we are trying to house just what you're saying, folks like you and me who want to be in these buildings and who can qualify. I probably won't qualify, but you.
And you think I will qualify if you can't?
Excuse me?
If you think I will qualify, if you can't qualify when my income's so low.
I could assure you that there's a big difference in, 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 in salary here.
Yes, there is.
And a thirty percent AMI individual who can apply to this building will get in if they have the right credentials, they're right, everything in order and there are no issues. So it is something that we have to work with, with the folks who are, are developing this, this property because we want to make a holistic community as we all are here planning to make sure that we are inclusive of everyone. So I do understand that there is the concern of this million dollar homes, but those are the folks that don't need the housing.
Agreed.
It's folks like you that are looking for housing, which this development is trying to accommodate. So I just wanted to state that.
May I please respond?
Yeah, sure, you can.
I, I know due disrespect, but I do understand how HPD Connect works. And many of those apartments are not available to me because I don't meet the income requirement. Second, um, I'm not, I, when you build something that's not affordable to the community at large, that's considered a lost opportunity to build something that is affordable. I'm not, I'm not one of those people who don't want affordable housing. I need affordable housing for myself and my brothers and sisters, my, my neighbors. You build something, make it affordable, I'll still have some issues with this project, but I won't be up here saying I'm opposed to this project. Now, this eighty percent AMI, one twenty percent AMI, average sixty-eight percent AMI still is not affordable. So Community Board eleven is barely sixty percent of AMI, which is fifty-five thousand, which is Community Board eleven's AMI. Think about the point twenty-five radius project and point fifty radius project is less than forty-five thousand. And half of the community makes less than fifty thousand. So already, you already rule out fifty percent of the community that's impacted by this project within point four hundred feet, point twenty-five mile radius and point fifty per mile radius. When you, I'm not against affordable housing. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry to get offended, but this developer is not trustworthy. He has an issue where he does bait and switch. So anything that he does, I don't trust. If this was a developer that has a history of being not profit over people, I'll be more inclined to be working with him. NIDC has a financial arrangement. I don't know financial arrangement with anyone here. I'm here because I care about my, my neighbors. I don't want them to be displaced like I was with Ida. I know how it feels to lose your home.
Understand that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, uh.
What's that?
Hold on, wait, sorry. Uh, hold, hold on one second. Let me go to Commissioner Osorio and then we'll, we'll come back to you, okay? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you very much for your testimony and your time. Uh, we, we, we really very much appreciate you taking the time to join us and sharing your opinion with us. Um, I wanted to ask you a question. So as Commissioner Marine, uh, just mentioned, and in response to his earlier question to the applicant, we learned that Neighborhood Initiative Development Corporation, or NIDC, is going to be a, the, the nonprofit manager who will be working with the city and working the applicant to manage, to manage the, um, allocation of the affordable housing units. So given your work in the community, and, and I think you mentioned you run a social justice organization, I was wondering if you can, eh, share with us, you know, your, your position, your perspective on this organization's reputation in the community, uh, and the extent to which, you know, who they work with, whether they work with your constituents and so forth.
I appreciate that question because it brings up Community Board eleven. We had a conflict interest with four board members and employee was on Community Board eleven. And which is why we didn't get a vote on this project because they didn't want to vote it down because the rest of the community board were not for it due to the lack of affordability. Second, NIDC has no, no background in this type of development. They were supposed to, uh, doing, uh, negotiate or mitigate tenant and landlord disputes. Because, you know, the law does not protect, they tried to mitigate and tried to create tenant associations. So I don't know why they created this relationship with this developer for unaffordable building, except for they're being, um, financially awarded to market these units. But you can market all you want. If I can't afford it, I can't buy it.
Thank you. And, and just a quick follow up. So in, in, just, just for the record, do you, do you have any recommendations or suggestions of, uh, other, uh, eh, local community based nonprofits that, that could potentially or should be considered in terms of?
Yeah, I think, uh, there's a very good group that fights a lot for tenant association Albany. Uh, I forgot, I went, went a few years ago, I went to the, I'm not sure, Housing Connect, I could give you, um, so, uh, they came one time, a few times to the Bronx for us to take the bus to fight for the tenant protection, against preferential, uh, rent. Um, but they're very good. They actually fight for tenants and will make sure to keep this landlord or this developer honest. Because I don't think.
I, I also wanted to say that you don't have to do it now, you can do it as part of your written testimony.
Yeah.
But, but I, because I have another really quick clarification question. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. At some point in your testimony, you mentioned that there was presumed contamination on site?
In your negative, you know, in the negative conditional declaration, it says there has to be sampling done. Again, I don't like the mud slang, but I do question their integrity where they would be honest with those sampling. Because there was a, like, the pre-birds period, there was a manufacturing zone. So I wouldn't be surprised, I won't say it's a, it's a brown store, it's brown field, but you might find some gas or something that needs to be remediated. I want someone who's honest, I don't want us to get polluted. You know, air quality is a factor. We already have the highest asphalt rate in the Bronx. We have a lot of traffic, unfortunately, car pollution is a major, uh, factor in the Bronx having the highest asphalt rate. So I'm not for cars, I'm trying to eliminate. Try, I'm a transit rider, I don't drive. I walk most of the time, I take the buses and trains. I'm not those, you know, one of those NIMBYs. I support affordable housing. If you make this an Ella program, I still have some concerns, but I won't be here opposing it.
Thank you. Thank you for your response and I look forward to reading your written comments.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Goodrich, did you have a follow up? Yep. Through the mix and, it's just through the mix and match program. So it's forty, and, and we can double check, we can double check, uh, and come back to the commission. But, uh, I have it as forty to sixty percent of the units.
Eighty.
Are up to sixty percent of AMI and the remaining are up to one thirty.
No, that's.
And, uh, hold on, hold on a second. Uh, and I'm going to turn to the department to correct me. And we're going to, unless there's other questions for, for this witness, I'm going to thank you for your time today. Uh, and we got it right up here. Okay, great.
It's eighty and one twenty.
So forty to sixty up to eighty and then forty to sixty, eighty to one twenty. Okay, there it is. Great. What they've actually, what they're actually proposing is what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, okay. I'm going to excuse you and I'm going to see if the applicant team wants us to, to come back and.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want, do you, you all want to say anything more about what you're actually proposing on this? Just so that we have it straight, we can clean up, yeah, on the AMIs, just so that we can clarify. We have in, in front of us the HPD Mix and Match, which we have as the rules are forty to sixty percent up to eighty AMI. And then, uh, forty to sixty at eighty to one twenty. Would, would you just go back and, and share what you are, what you're proposing here?
Sure. So to date, we've, we've been proposing the mix and match, which is the forty to sixty, as you noted, up to eighty, um, which requires a minimum forty percent below fifty essentially. Um, and then balance, um, forty to sixty percent, we would, um, go on the lower end, forty percent between eighty and one twenty and we would go on the lower end of that. But I think what we'd also like to commit to is, we, we're committed to working with the local council member to see if we can get this down to an Ella. Um, you know, we really started off with the mix and match because we believed it gave us the most of flexibility and the, and the ability to address commu, community concerns and present and bring some higher, um, AMI jobs, um, into the community. You know, in New York City, the AMI for a family of four is a hundred and twenty thousand. Starting salaries for New York City teachers, sixty thousand. So if you have two teachers and, uh, two children, they make a hundred percent of AMI. And they would be priced out of essentially of a lot of affordable housing. And we think projects like this should not only bring affordable housing to the lowest, but, you know, there's also a need at some of these higher income bands. And we really believe that that gave us the best opportunity. But we're committed to bringing the affordability that works for the community here. We're happy to discuss it further with the council member and with HPD to, to potentially bring an Ella here. And I would like to work with this local community member if, you know, she'd like to work with us, um, on, on that. We're committed to, to making this work.
Great, thank you very much, uh.
I did just want to emphasize the.
Just a comment, yeah.
Further AMI guidance that even though the, the kind of original band is forty to sixty, up to eighty, that forty percent have to be at the extremely low or very low income, which is the fifty or below. So it's, it is a little bit confusing the way it's framed out, but it, it goes deeper than that up to sixty. But that's not to discount and I, I really appreciate your, your testimony.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Goodrich's point, it requires some clarification.
Thank you for coming back, we appreciate it. Let me move on. Uh, we have, uh, several other people who wish to testify today. Let me call next Justice Favor from Laborers Local Seventy-nine. Mr. Favor, uh, when you are ready on Zoom, we would love to hear from you. How, how are you?
How are you? Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you guys for your time. Uh, my name is Justice Favor. I'm the Director of Strategic Partnership at the Labor Union Local Seventy-nine. Um, I represent over ten thousand members. Um, over eighty-five percent of those members live in New York City. Um, uh, over eighty percent are women and people of color. And we stand in solidarity in support of this project. Oftentimes, you hear the narrative about you can't build affordable in union. And we're just glad to partner with a developer that can actually shatter that misnomer. Um, over two thousand members of, of our labor union live inside, and live in the Bronx and will be able to work in, and work in their community and live and thrive in their community. Um, this applicant has, has an agreement with Local Seventy-nine that will ensure that this project provides good paying construction jobs. In addition, the project provides over three hundred units of much needed affordable housing that for members desperately need in this housing crisis. This project also provides a brand new supermarket that will ensure food access in, in this community for years to come. Lastly, this project will provide these resources in a sustainable way. Boston Road is a model project by developing under, underutilized land in a way that still maintains the use while providing new housing that is accessible to transit, sustainable and affordable. We are proud to support this project. And oftentimes, workers, our, our members, um, some, get, get lost in these discussions and this discourse about how folks that are middle of the road, our, our labor, our labor's average about sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year roughly. And folks like that are often overlooked as well. And how do you work in your community and also, uh, continue to thrive and sustain? And we stand in solidarity. I yield my time, any questions, I'm here.
Great, thank you very much. Um, okay, thank you for being with us. We, we appreciate it very much. Um, okay, I'm going to move on to, uh, Michael Cass, to be followed by Aaron Jones.
Hi, my name is Michael Cass. I'm a resident in Bronx Community Board eleven and I wanted to express my support for twenty-five sixty Boston Road. It's exciting to see new one hundred percent affordable housing come to this part of the district. The density is more than appropriate and will greatly enhance this major corridor. It's more than welcome. However, I'm concerned about the amount of parking being proposed. It's too much. I recall in the review session, it was stated that the residential parking requirement in this case is zero, given that the proposal is one hundred percent affordable housing in the transit zone. But I believe in today's presentation, it's been said that the residential parking being included is for the higher AMI units. So I'm glad that the commission has sought to clarify this. Regardless, we should be seeking to reduce the amount of parking. We know parking raises the cost of housing. And given the sincere concerns that have been expressed about the proposed AMI bans, perhaps reducing the parking here could potentially enable deeper affordability. It would also be in line with our sustainability goals. If anything, this is the type of case where I believe it would be useful for the city of New York to establish parking maximums. Excessive parking isn't in the public interest and it's unfortunate when applicants. and it's unfortunate when applicants feel pressured to propose far more parking than necessary. I hope parking maximums are ultimately included in the city of yes reforms. Lastly, I wanted to express appreciation for Commissioner Goodrich's line of questioning with respect to Ms. Marrero because opposition to new affordable housing is something we unfortunately see in this council district like we saw with the Bruckner sites rezoning last year. Again, I do support this project, and I look forward to its passage. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Cass. Uh, and we appreciate your being with us, uh, this afternoon. Um, okay, let me move on to Aaron Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Fantastic. Good morning, uh, good afternoon, apologies, commissioners. My name is Aaron Jones, Research Coordinator with SEIU Local Thirty-two BJ. On behalf of Thirty-two BJ's one hundred and eighty-five thousand New York City members, I'm pleased to speak in support of the twenty-five, twenty-five sixty Boston Road rezoning project. Thanks to proactive and productive discussions, the union has received strong and credible commitment from the applicant that will ensure the permanent building service jobs created by the project will be family sustaining ones. This means quality benefits like affordable family health insurance and industry standard wages that enable working families to remain in the city. In addition, this project will provide over three hundred units of much needed transit accessible affordable housing in the Bronx, a borough where thousands of our members live and fight to raise their families against every increasing cost of living. This project will also result in a brand new service market that will ensure food access in the community into the future. Boston Road twenty-five sixty is a clear example of responsible development that will transform underutilized parcels to the benefit of local families and workers. On behalf of the union, I urge the commission to support it. And while I, I know that I still have a little bit of time left, I'll, I'll also mention, um, that I'm happy to report that the union has received similar commitment to good jobs from the applicant on a previous item, the, um, twenty-three ten Queens Plaza project, which we heard a few items earlier. Um, so I'll reiterate that we're excited and pleased to support that project as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We appreciate your, uh, your testimony. Uh, and, um, I do not see any questions for you, so we will, uh, uh, we'll, we'll again thank you for being with us. And I am doing a final check here to make sure that there are no members of the public in addition to you, um, Mr. Jones, who wish to testify this afternoon, and I see none. Um, so with that, uh, I am going to close the hearing on twenty-five sixty Boston Road. And I will ask you, Madam Secretary, if there's any other business before the commission today.
No, Chair Grodik. There is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal, through GCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, One Twenty Broadway, Thirty-first Floor, New York, New York, One Zero Two Seven One.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, the time is now twelve thirty-eight, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for your time today.